I'd like to call it to order the Southborough School Committee open meeting of Wednesday, April 11th, 2018. And first item on the agenda is special recognition.
Well, this is a time that we really take pause to celebrate and recognize the incredible contribution of our school committee members. Unfortunately for us, but I can see you're smiling after many years of serving the Southborough School Committee well and the school district, that we have to say you're moving on.
Yes.
And it's time. And Jerry as well. So this is a little different scenario because generally the chair takes the lead, but I think Paul is the next in seniority. And I would ask if Paul would like to join me in the presentation?
Sure.
Roger, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Is it the most seniority? Okay. So again, from all of us to both of you, we give you our deepest heartfelt thanks and appreciation for all that you have done for the Southborough Schools. The number of years that you have served, the numerous issues that you have championed along the way in celebration of our students and our teachers and our administrators have probably been far more numerous than we could mention. The challenges that were before you, most recently and certain through the years, and your steadfast commitment to our, to education and to our students is just tremendous. And I don't know how we're going to replace both of you in the roles that you've taken on. Given up your personal time and left your family alone many nights as our school committee meetings have gone on, I'm sure has been a commitment that's been a family commitment. And so we recognize their contributions as well. And so we do have a few parting gifts and those who would also like to recognize all the work that you've done. Paul, do you want to say a few words as well?
Sure.
As a colleague, committee colleague.
Yeah, starting with Mary Beth. We've been here 15?
My 15th school year.
I've served as mentor to all kinds of school committee members, including myself. I think one of the first things I did was go over to Mary Beth's house and she explained to me what the school committee does. And it was just a very big help to me. And her institutional knowledge has been really valuable all these years and really missed. And Jerry came along in a rather challenging time when we was talking closing schools. And he dove right in and had a real affinity for numbers. It was very helpful and just level head. And it's been just an outstanding member for six years. And we appreciate all your dedication for both of you. So, thanks so much.
And we have a couple of messages to send your way from both the Senate and the House of Representatives. Oh, do you want me to? I can read and you can shake?
Yeah.
To Mary Beth Strickland, be it hereby known to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Mary Beth. Our Strickland -- oh, please excuse me, can I turn on the show? In recognition of your dedicated service to the town of Southborough as vice chair of the Southborough School Committee, the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavor. Presented this day, April 11th at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and none other than our own State Rep., Carolyn Deickma, who has certainly been a partner with you for all these years. That is the first. And the State Senate, not to be outdone with even bigger font, is the official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Mary Beth O. Strickland. In recognition of your dedicated service as a member of the Southborough School Committee and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy of therefore transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. And Harriet Chandler, as we know, is, you know, just in the next neighborhood, she is the current serving President of the Senate. So it's nice to have somebody nearby that knows our district signing this document. And also presented by William F. Welch and James B. Elrich. But wait, but wait.
There's more.
At a local level, we have the much-covered-in clock that you will never have to time yourself with being present or a little late or early for the next meeting. And also, I think something that really symbolizes education, and it's the core of the work that you've provided on our behalf for so many years, and that's our crystal apple. There is no other crystal like any other, sort of like a snowflake. And you two are like no other member that we will have on the school committee. Thank you so much.
Speech? Speech. You know, I guess I would just say it's been a privilege to be on this committee all these years. And I've often had people kind of say to me, "How could you do this so long?" You've done, you know, but I think it's because it's been such a wonderful environment of respect. And I think it's been a privilege to work with the administration, with the principals, with the staff. And I think there's always been a level of respect. And I think that because I've worked in such a district where I feel like everybody, the school committee, the administration, the teachers, the main focus has always been the kids here. So there's the politics, the, you know, you hear, talking to other school committee members or reading, and I felt like everybody's always had a common goal here. And I think that's why I could sort of keep doing this for so long, because I felt that commitment to that. So I thank you all.
And I would like to thank Mary Beth. She basically helped me grow roots in my role as superintendent. She was already on the committee. And I just want to thank you for your guidance and your wisdom and your humor through some challenging moments. And it's very much appreciated. And Paul, did you, do you want to come up again?
You're doing a fine job.
So we also have someone else bidding us a fine adieu. And again, Jerry has been, I think you came on board right when I was transitioning. And I remember in the office with Charles, both of us becoming more familiar with our new positions and chatting a little bit about the challenges before us. And I want to thank you as well for your steadfast support and your guidance and your perspective that has always brought about, just as perspectives would, a new way of looking at every situation. And oftentimes very much shed, set some very valuable light on all of the topics that we've had to discuss over the years. You will be greatly missed in your own chair.
And miss you guys.
And certainly your wisdom as a committee member. And we appreciate all that you've done and the time that you've done with us. And the Senate and the House, they've been very busy. And not to be outdone, we will have to the Senate presentation. And this is presented to Gerald V. Capra, again, first the middle initial there. State Senate official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Jerry V. Capra in recognition of your dedicated service as a member of the Southborough School Committee. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. Signed by Harriet Elchandler. And the House. Commonwealth of Massachusetts House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Gerald V. Capra in recognition of your dedicated service to the town of Southborough as Chair of the Southborough School Committee. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Presented this 11th day of April, Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and Carolyn Deickma. She's everywhere.
She is everywhere.
She is.
She really is.
Congratulations. That's what you're getting. Yes, what you're getting. And time marches on. And we say hello and we say goodbye. And unfortunately, we're saying, "See you later" and somewhere this evening. And again, we hope that you do not look at this too often as you travel through the future. And you certainly won't have to worry about being here at 6:30 on Wednesday, the second Wednesday of the month for a while, unless we're always looking for an audience. You'd like to be part of the audience. Dave Fineran would love some company sometime. And again, the highest recognition that we bestow on retiring members of our school community is the crystal apple. Education is the core of our work, and we've certainly been at the core of many conversations that have led us and guided us in our work with our students and staff. So thank you very much. We should open our apple. Round the speech, a speech, and round the big five.
First, I just want to thank everyone. It's really been, I think, a great experience for me. And I'm working with some of the nicest people. And a couple of people I wanted to mention is Mary Beth, who taught me everything I knew. But for that first couple of weeks, she would have been here forever. And Paul also for actually convincing me to even run at the time. And so I just want to just give special thanks to them. And then my final thanks really is to the citizens of Southborough who were kind enough to elect me to this office, okay, and allowed me to serve over the last six years. And I'm very appreciative for that also. So, but again, thank you, everybody. And I'm sure that I'll be seeing you around somewhere. So.
And no recognition would be complete without cake. And there is a cake. It's behind the bookshelf. So we can either partake now or have a very sweet closing to the meeting today. And it's the will of the committee.
Sweet closing?
I say sweet closing.
Okay.
Yeah, I just ate.
Because then we would get two cakes.
Two cakes.
There we go.
Two apples, one cake.
Wow.
It's a hidden apple.
It's sort of like a Harry Potter.
Yeah.
Isn't it like a Harry Potter apple?
It's a puzzle.
It is a puzzle.
It's not cute. It's not cute.
You're an engineer.
I'll do that later.
Final test. We have to watch you.
Jerry, that's what you can do with your time.
You've got to be on the school committee for 15 years to figure that out.
You've got a little garbage pile down here. There we go. You cleaned it up.
Well, the next item on the agenda is audience sharing.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Harrigan-Pileczko, 28th Darling Drive. I'm still in town meeting mode. And I'm currently the Chair of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, but that doesn't matter. I'm also a prior member of the Southborough School Committee for nine years. And I'd like to continue on in this special recognition because looking around this table, I don't think any of us would be here without Mary Beth. I know I certainly wouldn't have been.
Yeah, that's true.
That is true.
Because I strong-armed her into it. Yeah, pretty much.
But the reason, if you were able to strong-arm me into it, is because, I think, because of your leadership and just great spirit and personality. I mean, you transformed this school committee. And nobody, well, maybe a couple of you do remember, there were some years that it was, you know, when we were trying to get a new, our own high school. I mean, there were some really turbulent times in Southborough. And I had always said, "I'm not going to be a part of that." But Mary Beth convinced me. She says, "We've got a kindler, gentler school committee now." And she was right. And one of the reasons for that is because of her.
And Sue Targan.
So because I joined, then I pulled other people in, and then we both targeted Paul because you went up to the town meeting. You said, "Why can't we raise the school budget?" We're like, "We want him on." And so, and because Paul is here, then, you know, the rest of you are here. And every single other person at this table has been touched because Mary Beth, if not, has been on almost every screening committee. But if she wasn't on the specific screening committee, certainly she trained the other people of how to be a really effective and fair and, you know, just excellent screening committee member. So.
That came from Sue Targan.
Yeah, but, oh, you know what? But you also outlived us all, right? Except for you guys who are assistant principals. You have outlived everybody in administration of a school. You've outlived me. So, so thank you, Mary Beth. You're like the mother of Southborough School Committee, current school committee. And I know, I appreciate the experience that I had. I appreciate knowing all of you people. And so people I don't know, sorry.
We met before.
But, but thank you very much. And Jerry, thank you very much for your just unbelievable, you have such a great calm demeanor that even when things were, you know, getting exciting for whatever reason, you were just there. You were just like the Energizer Bunny. You just, you know, kept on ticking. You didn't ever get excited about things. And you kept everything calm. And your years as Chair have been really, really helpful for just, you know, continuing on in that, in that vein. And I think that you are all doing a great service to the Southborough Town. And I hope that everybody who comes in after you guys are, are just as competent and just terrific. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Is there any more audience sharing?
I'm the veteran president of the Southborough Teachers Association. And I need to get up and say thank you on behalf of all the teachers and staff in the district for your years and years of service, your dedication and commitment to fight for what we need in schools. Didn't go unnoticed. We appreciate it. So enjoy your time. And thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. And anyone else? Okay, so we can move to the first item under new business, which is the technology update.
If you're on region committee, if you're at the regional committee or combined, you've probably met this individual because Julie Doyle is everywhere and everything about technology. We are very fortunate that she decided in January to transition from her very visible and important role as the instructional technology leader at Algonquin Regional High School into a more district-wide position that will allow her talents to be shared and her knowledge and expertise in technology and instructional technology learning to all of the students throughout the K-12 system. So this evening, Julie will share with you some of the conversations that she's had as she expands her horizons and gets to know a little bit more and become familiar with all of our schools in our district. And that is probably the most sunshine we've seen and color we've seen in some weeks. So what a great way to kick off your presentation. Welcome to the first of, I'm sure, what will be many visits here.
Glad to have you here. So I just wanted to take a little time tonight to introduce myself and to talk a little bit about my new role as the Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning. That's a little bit of a mouthful. First, a little bit about my background. So I've lived in Northborough since 1999. I am the proud mother of three Algonquin graduates. I have been an educator for over 20 years. Many of those years spent teaching high school math. Some of those years teaching high school math at a private high school. But most of those years teaching high school math at Algonquin. And in fact, I had the absolute privilege of teaching all of the Strickland kids mathematics. So my last four years have been spent as the instructional technology teacher at Algonquin. I'm very excited about my new position and to be able to share my passion for educational technology with all the schools of the district. So in this new role, my focus will be to provide the necessary resources and training in order to make teachers feel comfortable to embed technology into their curriculum. I'll be working very closely with the district technology managers to ensure that building infrastructure and hardware support learning initiatives. So technology can never replace good teaching. Teachers need to integrate technology seamlessly into their curriculum, not as an add-on or an afterthought. Technology should enhance lessons. It should transform the learning. And if used correctly, it could empower our students to be self-directed learners, to be more creative and more connected. In case you're wondering who George Karos is, he is a innovative teaching, leadership, and learning consultant. I've heard him speak at a few conferences, and he's fabulous. He's also published a couple of books, if you ever see his name around. So over the last few months, I've been learning about all the various aspects of this job. I've had the opportunity to meet with the principals from Finn and Woodward, Neri and Torreier to discuss their current and future educational technology goals. And as you heard earlier, most of my professional experience has been at the high school level. But, so I know I have a lot to learn about K to 8 curriculum and technology, but I feel as though my high school experience will help. As a teacher at the high school, I was able to observe how prepared our students were entering the high school, but I was also able to observe maybe where some of the gaps in preparation were. So for this and this reason, and I think it's really important too, to provide collaboration time across schools and grade levels for teachers to help to smooth the transition from grade to grade and also to help to vertically and horizontally align curriculum and instruction. So a good example of sort of that cross-collaboration between schools and grade levels is our decision to start to use Canvas at the middle school. Canvas is the learning management system that we recently adopted at Algonquin. And this year since January, there've been a few teachers at Torreier who are piloting Canvas to help to smooth the transition to the full implementation of Canvas next year. Canvas is a way to simplify teaching and learning. It places all the digital tools that teachers use in one simple place. It is a great tool for collaboration and communication. It can help students stay more organized. It can help to provide faster and more valuable feedback. So we've had a really successful year using Canvas at the high school. And by expanding its use to the middle schools, we're helping to prepare those middle school students for, for high school. The teaching and learning that's going on in the tech ed classes at Torreier is another really good example of a technology initiative. They are using the engineering designing process and embedding science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM, into their curriculum. They brainstorm ideas of what to create. They use computer aided design and then print out 3D models of their prototypes. They are learning about things like the physics behind bridge building and how engineers design cars for safety. This year at Neri, the instructional technology teacher and the librarian have combined library technology and the 21st century skills of communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity to create a class called Libratory. During this class, the students are participating in multiple Stream center-based activities. Now, STREAM stands for Science, Technology, Reading and Research, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. In the picture, you can see some Neri students using the Osmos in another classroom setting. After a very successful fundraising campaign, Neri was able to purchase 11 classroom sets. I think there's still this, some more to be purchased.
Three more.
Right? So these are, they're game systems that work in conjunction with the iPads, and they're one-to-one iPads over at Neri. When they're using the Osmos, they're engaged in active learning, and they're also working on their creative problem-solving skills. Teachers at Neri and at Woodward are using a new parent communication tool this year. And it's called Seesaw. Seesaw is a way, it gives families immediate and personalized window into their child's school day. And it also makes communication between parents and teachers seamless. During one of my recent visits to Woodward, I observed the use of Seesaw in a third-grade classroom. And there were, kids had made short videos to describe the difference between the words "there," "there," and "there." You guys know those three words that I'm talking about? So they were, they made the videos and they were able to share them on the app really quickly with their families. One of the technology goals for next year is to expand the use of this great communication tool. In this picture, there are students working with Root robots. Root is a wall-driving, music-playing, artwork-drawing robot that turns paper or a whiteboard into an intuitive and interactive coding experience. Currently, Woodward has 10 pre-production Roots that they are using with the second and third graders. The instructional technology specialist is working with the teachers to figure out ways to integrate this technology. And I know counting money is an early math skill, and it's part of the math curriculum. So the kids are learning how to code Root to navigate through a maze and to gather up different types of coins and then to add up their value. At Finn, they hope to improve on their current practices of embedding coding and the use of the B-bots into classroom learning. B-bots are little robots that are designed for use by young children. They are easy to operate and a perfect tool for teaching directionality, estimation, sequencing, and problem solving. In kindergarten, students have a unit where they learn about their communities. And the Finn kindergartners are learning how to code the B-bots to move around a laminated map and to locate significant places in their community like the fire station, the town hall, the library. Another technology goal at Finn is to choose an effective communication tool like Seesaw. So as you can see, there is all sorts of great, exciting tech integration going on in the Southborough Schools. Instructional technology encompasses so much. What I spoke about earlier and this diagram are just a few of the many focus areas. Teachers and instructional technology coaches need to always be mindful, though, of the importance of embedding technology into pre-existing curriculum to transform the learning. In order for our students to be successful, we want them to effectively read, write, think, analyze, problem solve. We want to use technology to help them master those essential cognitive We also would like our educators to teach kids to engage safely and responsibly with technology so they can acquire those 21st century skills they need to succeed in college, career, and life. Hold on. Does anyone have any questions?
One thing I wanted to note is, just in, the first time I dealt with schools with technology was about six years ago, but just how far we've come. I mean, just seeing the presentation and the way that you're explaining it and the way that you pull the whole thing together, we have come a very, very long way from back when I first looked at this, with the school committee, six years ago. So I really thank you for really pulling it all together. Because I just remember there was at one point there where we were just, it was very confused. And we were looking at iPads and, you know, you know, we were very, kind of very just focused on one little thing. And obviously, we're not way that you pull the whole thing together, we have come a very, very long way from back when I first looked at this with the school committee six years ago. So, I really thank you for really pulling it all together, because I just remember there was at one point there where we were just, it was very confused, and we were looking at iPads and, you know, we were very, kind of very just focused on one little thing. And obviously, we're not there anymore. We're, we have a real comprehensive understanding of what we're trying to accomplish, so, again, it's just a lot of thanks and we've really done a lot.
Oh, great. Thanks. Yeah, I'm really excited to keep moving forward with that.
Just some kind of like a general big picture. So, I guess, this is amazing, all the things that are being done, like what percentage of the way are we there in terms of what we envision for integration into the classroom? Because, I mean, these are wonderful programs, I just, I have a hard time sort of picturing sort of what the optimal setting looks like.
Yeah, and that's, that's an excellent question. I think, I don't know if we'll ever reach that, that optimal setting. And, you know, for me, I'm mostly aware of what's, what's going on at the high school and I'm just starting to learn it, what's going on K. And we have pockets of absolute high flyers with, with technology. Those would be the teachers, and then we have some who are sort of middle-range, and then we have some who are still learning. So, I hope, you know, in my tenure here, that I can sort of bring everyone up to that, that level. You know, they, they talk about our kids being digital natives, and this is the way kids learn. So, you know, we want to be mindful of not just assuming that kids know everything about technology, but we also want to meet them where they're at and, and provide them with so many cool opportunities that technology can provide for them that, that they couldn't, that couldn't happen before. Like Skyping with a group of kids in France, or, you know, just, you know, creating videos just on the fly and sharing those videos. And there's just so many cool things that kids can do, but right, and super important to just continue to embed that into the existing curriculum, because ultimately, they still need to know how to communicate and write and think, and we don't want it to just be this extra add-on fun thing, and then we want to be mindful of safety too. So, what percentage, that's, that's, that's hard for me to judge, but that's a good question.
And I guess as a follow-up, are there, are there major sort of categories of technology that will be needed in order to implement the things to bring us to an even further level? Or is it?
I think we're in a, are you talking about hardware?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in a really good place right now. Yeah, we, especially the Southborough Schools, we, I think, are well-equipped, and, and our focus really needs to be on how to use the equipment we have and how to keep it updated. But for now, I, I think, based on my experience with, you know, going to conferences and learning what's happening at other schools, yeah, I think, until something else, they create something else, you know, that, that you can wear and that'll, you can just think about what, what it should do and it'll do it for you. We don't have any of those yet, but, yeah. For now, we're in a good place.
Okay. Thank you.
I was gonna say that one of our measurements, well, it still kind of is a measurement, was how many units we had, you know, in the schools for students. And so, that was the main way that we tried to measure, is we, we didn't measure some of the other things that are being done there, but we wanted to make sure that as many students as possible had access to technology. So, that, so that was the main thing that we tried to do, I think, as a school committee, was to make sure the funds were there to do that. And then, to have the school go off and put together the plan to improve achievement. So...
But I think, I think that's what's done the six years difference, is that it's not technology for the sake of having the technology, it's having the right technology, having the right apps, and not superseding the learning, making sure it's, it's a, accenting the learning or just helping it as opposed to...
I think, you know, just the creation of this particular job, you know, we before had a director of technology and, you know, the focus on the instructional piece is, is a priority for the district, so I think that's important as well.
And I, I'm also wondering about the, the digital literacy certificate, that I think at some point, all the, is, is there a timeframe for that? Where everybody, just speaking of the varying levels.
Yeah, yeah, we're still exploring that option.
Okay.
I think you presented some great modules, though. Julie was actually part of the development of the first few modules that we were creating for our teachers.
Yep.
And presented to the NASA team at one of our retreat workshops, I think, last year, so that we could actually try out, in our very novice way, some of us, not those across the table from me, but some of us, and just work through those modules to see how readily accessible the information was for us to then take from that experience and utilize and apply in our own work setting. So, I think we have about four or five modules created for that already to work on.
Super important for those modules to stay current, and things change constantly, so that's, that's the challenge at this point, just to make sure they're current and up-to-date, because a tutorial made last month, the tool might change and they have an update, and so, yeah, that's...
Because I thought that was fabulous.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great, great thing.
I have a question. I'm very interested in differentiated learning, and as you mentioned a minute ago, meeting kids where they're at.
Sure.
So, I don't know if you've had a chance to sort of assess how we're doing on that front. I mean, I'm, I'm sure technology plays a big role there.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if you have any thoughts on how we're doing on that and, or where we're going?
Well, I think a lot of the, the tools that we already have in place are sort of differentiating learning, differentiating learning, like for instance, those Osmos, right? That, that's sort of a center that, you know, for kids who, you know, maybe have already finished with learning one particular topic and the teacher needs to work particularly with another group, maybe they're having a harder time, they can sort of send these kids off to do some more exploration. Those Osmos, they can learn coding, they can learn all sorts of things. Canvas, too, is a great tool to differentiate learning. Teachers can sort of have their class as sort of a blended learning experience, so to give kids options to explore things they're passionate about or to explore some more advanced skills. Just the actual, you know, Chromebooks, even in the third-grade class, I heard, you know, a teacher told me that with her third graders, sometimes if they, you know, one particular group, maybe they're doing, they're reading something, but the other group, the kids are watching a little video about something, learning about it on their own, and then, you know, doing another exercise to sort of evaluate whether or not they understood the video. So, I think it really lends itself to differentiated learning, and I don't know if that...
Yeah, that's great.
...is your question.
And are you gonna be working with the principals on budgets for technology?
I think I am.
Well, good. Keep us posted, let us know what you need. We're here to help.
All right.
And I understand that next year, Algonquin is gonna be, is gonna be Bring Your Own Device?
We are moving in that direction. We're trying to, you know, put, put things in place in order for that to happen. We still need to work out some details, but we're definitely exploring that. We're, we have a few teachers piloting it right now and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. That's great. It's great to have the update.
Thanks for having me.
The next item on the agenda is the Summer Enrichment Program.
Equally exciting, this is a new launch for us, and I'm gonna turn this over to Greg.
So, we're very excited to share with the community that we're launching a Summer Enrichment Program for Northborough and Southborough. It's a three-week program with a focus of STEAM, so science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. It's three-week modules, and there's a lot of flexibility in terms of how families sign up their children. They can sign up for one week, two weeks, or all three weeks. Each day, there is our two sessions, so parents can choose to sign up for one session or both sessions. And there are varying programs for students in grades K through 8. All of these classes are taught by Northborough and Southborough educators, and this year, the program will be hosted at Trotter School, and our goal is to start small and to have some success this summer and really expand it in the future years. And the programs range from marvelous math to media literacy to robotics to literacy theater, so a lot of great opportunities for students. We're hoping to communicate this to the community in the next few days, that is the goal, if not by Friday, right when we return from vacation, so parents can take a look at the offerings and make a decision around signing up their children. So, we're very excited and we're hopeful that it will be a success.
So, just, so this is different than our normal summer programs for children, so this is a new incremental program?
This is outside of our ESY program.
That's right, that we're actually charging a small, a very nominal, I see very...
Is this open to anyone in the district?
Correct, and it is also, it's self-funding, so it doesn't impact our operational budgets. It's fee-based and...
Wow.
I think it's awesome. I love this.
Now, what are the idea, I mean, this is really good.
I also would like to thank Sandy Squardato, who is an instructional technology specialist here at Trotter School, who's really helped work closely with me and bring this to fruition. So, behind the scenes, there's been some great minds, and she is definitely one person who's kind of helped spearhead this initiative.
And about how many, how many educators will be involved in this, do we know?
So, we have about 30 teachers.
Teachers.
Who are interested, showed an interest in teaching classes.
Because we just don't know how this, where this might go, I mean, you could end up with a much bigger enrollment than you ever thought, or, you know, as long as, as long as it gets out there, you know, it gets properly out.
So, we started by asking teachers what they might be interested in teaching, so we solicited interests first. And all of the selections that you see here are based on teachers' interests of what they wanted to teach, given the framework of STEAM. And we also have done the math and understand what we need to do to generate revenue to make this a self-funding program, so...
And how are you going to, what are we gonna do to get the word to the public on this? How are we gonna, what's, is there any kind of a plan or to promote it?
I think the packets alone will...
Well, for us, I mean, you know...
We're gonna use retired school committee members.
They're gonna go door to door.
That's what happens when you ask too many questions.
No, we're, so we're gonna primarily communicate through our website and through the principals' communications to families. We're really trying to target our school-aged children, so...
And I didn't say even, this would be something, even the town blog, I think, would be more than happy to put something like this out there, because I think this...
Just putting this out there.
Yeah, yeah, this could be very successful.
I would just comment, and I don't wanna rush, don't rush anything, but I, as somebody who's signing up for camps, is, some camps are already, like, committed.
We're past them.
Yeah, so just so that people are choosing between like the rec department camp or this, the early bird ends pretty soon, which I think a lot of people try to make, so...
And we are partnering, you know, we've had conversations with the rec department about how we can collaborate together.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of logistics in terms of setting up a revolving account and all those other pieces, where we want to make sure it's, it's well-thought-out and vetted and that when parents sign up, it's, it's a one-time signup feature, so we're trying to...
This is great. I think this is a wonderful idea.
I think it is great. You do have a good point about the, because I remember, it's a long time ago now, but, you know, that basically, you signed up for summer camps in April, you know, so it's, that's one thing that we could be...
Yeah, in the future, our January, February, it's our timeline to...
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
It is.
I think it is. They sound like really great programs, so, awesome. I would like to...
I would like it.
You need to tell Mary Beth there's an age restriction. That was just a sidebar. Greg and I were presenting, Greg was presenting this, and I said, "Oh, I'd like to take these, some of these," and he said, "Mrs. Johnson, I will remind you, there's an age restriction." And you clearly surpassed the numbers.
It's purely a sound.
I like the zumba español. Well, thank you, Greg.
Escape room challenge.
I know. We took one of those.
And the next item is the legislative update.
There have been, there has been a lot of activity and many opportunities to meet with our legislative team throughout this past month and/or so, and I know Paul has spearheaded several of the gatherings, so I, I don't know. Mr. Desmond would like to comment, I certainly can.
Yeah, we had a good meeting, I guess, two good meetings. First one with Representative Dykema, and there were school committee members from Southborough, Northborough, Southborough, Kathleen, Holliston, and Hopkinton, you know, all of which she represents, so that was two or three weeks ago, and it just delved onto all kinds of areas that were really outside of her expertise, so she took the initiative to invite Alice Peisch, who is co-chair of the House Education Committee. And she's from Wellesley, so she was good enough to meet with us just the other day, and that was a very interesting discussion. I mean, I guess I should probably apologize for all the harsh words I said about the legislature, about the circuit breaker, the baccal, because they, that really was kind of, it blindsided them too, and I learned a little more about how circuit breaker funding happens, and it's, it's basically based on estimates for the last five years, and they just came in higher for some reason. Usually, that works pretty well, so anyway, that messed them all up. It wasn't their fault. But, you know, on the other hand, you don't come away with a woman fuzzy feeling that things are gonna get a lot better anytime soon, especially, there's a lot of tax implications. There's a, I guess, two potentially ballot questions. One, to lower the sales tax from 6.25% on a five, which would be fairly devastating for the state, and another, the so-called millionaire's tax is in danger of not being on the ballot. That passed two constitutional conventions the last two years. The last step is a ballot vote, you know, in November, but there's some group that's challenging the legality of the ballot question, the way it's worded or something. So, if they succeed in knocking that off the ballot, then that's about $2 billion that we won't be getting. And, and another thing she said was, if one of those succeeds and the other doesn't, it's like a wash. So... Those are my big takeaways, I guess, but...
Yeah, the good news, Greg and I attended another legislative breakfast, and it actually was interesting because we had representation from across the Commonwealth, because it was the Regional School Association that sponsored that, and the regional schools, you know, represent districts that we may not otherwise be at the table with on a, on a regular basis. And so, to hear sort of the global perspective, the Massachusetts landscape perspective from, you know, our counterparts on the western part of Massachusetts was pretty eye-opening for us. And so, the focus, again, even at the regional level, is about circuit breaker and transportation reimbursement, which actually is and does impact the K-8 system. Digging more deeply into bus routes, bus stops, and bus costs, we find that a bus cost to the K-8s would double if there wasn't regional transportation. So, if we pay a daily rate of $150 for a bus at the K-8 level, it would be the equivalent of $300, should we not have the benefit of tearing off of regional. So, that would double our transportation costs at the K-8 level. So, that was a very interesting conversation. But on the upside, Tom Scott, who is the executive director of the Superintendent's Association, sent some very enthusiastic communications, and, and Tom is, is a dynamic individual, but not always enthusiastic, and so to see and to receive a letter that says yahoo is exciting and promising, and that was, you know, that it looks like, at this point, with just one vote pending, I think in the Senate, that circuit breaker would be back to 72%, 3% shy of what we had hoped it would have been or what we, what it, you know, was, led us to believe when we were preparing our budgets. But, you know, 72 is better than 65, and that would be sort of retro to FY18, and that would be the number that they at least minimally would move forward with in FY19. In terms of the transportation, which again, does impact the K-8s, again, requesting slight movement, but not hoping, you know, hoping for more, but not, but being realistic and not anticipating. The extraordinary relief, circuit breaker applications have been submitted, and we're waiting to see what the government, the governor does with that and whether there's actually a tie-in to that 72% reimbursement for circuit breaker. So, you know, we're waiting, but I think this is as close as we've been to seeing an increase. Another calculation that really affects the budget process, mostly for our towns, which indirectly, indirectly affects us, but definitely at the regional, regional level, is the request to set the minimum local contribution rates sooner and leave them alone. And I think that was the message mostly to the legislative branch and our representatives, which is, you know, we need those numbers to be solid, and they can't fluctuate once we build our budget, because for, for many districts, it is devastation, and at best, it's reductions in other line items in order to meet any reductions in transportation and circuit breaker relief. So, if you... So, if you set them, leave them, because we can't, we can't afford those great fluctuations in our budgets once approved. But lots and lots of conversation, and a lot of people out, I think more this year than I've experienced in the, in the last seven plus, that people are very mobilized, they're very active, and their voices are being heard, and more than heard, they're being listened to. So, really great conversations.
I neglected to mention that Greg Martino was there at the meeting with Alice Peisch too, and he brought up a lot of good points, I thought. And she seemed to be receptive to, I think, all of them, but I don't know if you want to talk about any of those, Greg?
No, I think we also talked about some flexibility about being more innovative, that, you know, these policies that are blanket policies that cover all districts, regardless of your a level five underperforming or a level one high performing, we'd like some more flexibility to think about innovation and how we can really meet the needs of our, of our student population in innovative ways. And she was, I think, very receptive and wanted to hear more specifics about our thinking.
Yep. Yes, sir. That's all I got. The next item is the town meeting recap.
Better budget pass.
Yes.
At a track.
We're gonna start spending it now. Yeah, it was a wonderful town meeting. Our budget's passed with no holds.
As did all the others.
Unprecedented.
I don't think that's ever happened.
I just stopped breathing after the school, whether they, you know, it's great the other day. It's wonderful.
I don't recall they taken through with not.
I was just, I think the whole place was kind of looking though, but that really happened.
Well, there's a big round of applause.
Might have gotten to a point where nobody wanted to break the chain.
That's good, because we were at the end.
We were last, so that's great. I hope it holds every month, every, every meeting.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was great.
Yeah, it was good. It was a good town meeting.
Very positive energy, I think, in the auditorium, not just about the budgets, but.
Really?
Mostly.
Under old business, kindergarten transition update.
No new information. The process still remains the same, looking at total enrollment. That's known at some time throughout the summer, it fluctuates, and last year, we did make the final decisions in terms of what the tuition reimbursement, the tuition would be, based on the total enrollment, the amount of staff, and the extent to which we will be relying on revolving funds to offset what's not appropriated in the operational budget. I'm very optimistic that we will be able to meet our projections, which would be to transition to eighty-three percent on the operational budget with a reduction of tuition in the neighborhood of two thousand dollars. And so, from thirty to fifty in two years to that point, I think it's phenomenal. And our goal will be, again, I'm sure, next year, as we look at our priorities, to continue that positive trajectory and try to make this a reality within that three to five-year timeframe. And it's very likely that we will be able to do that.
Very good. Next item is the public safety building update.
Well, there's some good news here, and then there's some interesting news. So, the good news is that we are moving forward. We've met, again, I think Principal Mucci shared at our last meeting, that we had met with the design firm, and we determined that because of the conversations moving forward with respect to milling and repaving the entire area, our costs, our overall costs are not yet known, and that a lot of what those costs will be, will best be known once the DPW superintendent submits her bids for the work that she is planning to do this summer. And we will pay back on those savings as a consolidated RFP for pavement, and that if we need to phase fin, phase Woodward over two years, that being the, the change of the entryway, the wall, the park, the reassignment of the parking spaces, and then the connectivity to the public safety building, which looks like it will be sometime after we do our work, and then the second year, look at paving and milling, milling and paving. That will be determined probably in the summer, as to whether or not we can afford that all in one year, or do we want to phase it over a year and a half. And as we know, we're using a lot of our, our receipts, our revolving fund, and balancing some of that with the operational budget. I think we're in good shape. I remember Mary Beth's statement, the last time I said, well, our invoice so far on the design fees was about eighty-five hundred, and I think Mary Beth said, really? I was expecting it to be about twenty-five thousand. So, you're closest without going over, because the next bid, I'm not sure if the price is right, but you're closest without going over. Because of the additional work, the survey work that needs to be done, and the redesigning of the wall and so forth, we're at about twenty-two-five.
You should update your inventory here now, or you're probably right.
We have a new audience member, just wants.
I apologize, it happened last night. It's some sort of pop-up.
Oh.
So, even though my volume is off, I'm sorry.
It happened, it's a little relief.
I've been able to figure it out.
Commercial breaks are good. So, it's about twenty-two-five, but it would have been, it's work that we would have had to do regardless of the project, so we're paying it sooner than, than later, and we're still pleased with the, I think, the response from VHB, which is the architect and some of the consultant work that the town is using. I think the, we have great confidence in continuing our collaboration with the town, so, on the project, so where we can realize some savings through the work that the town is doing in that area, we're certainly continuing those conversations. We know now that the town is providing the gate, which we originally thought was going to come into our cost for the project, so, you know, I'm sure the gate is hopefully not the end, but just the start of the continued savings. And as we learned the other evening, the public safety building is moving forward with some favorable costs, so hopefully that will trickle our way as well.
Just put the low near drive button.
Just dump the asphalt a little farther to the left, so. And we're working with the rec too, because as we saw from our little paper, transparent paper there, tracing paper that we had up on the screen, we are redesigning the basketball and location reconfiguring that. So, we're making sure that the work that we do is timed well with the rec to this summer. It's exciting.
Next item on the agenda is school start time.
I'm not sure if anyone on the committee wants to comment on this first. We had a great discussion at Combined, and from my office, we're continuing to assess and evaluate the routes. We had, and bus stops, as originally planned, NRT, which is North Reading Transit, that's our bus company, was in this afternoon, and we spent about three hours with them, just going over some options, and at this point, you know, continuing to, to look for possibilities. And I think good conversation and a lot of good work, and some potential for some innovative options moving forward. We turned over to them all of our routes this year, and they will be working on rooting the three districts next week. And for Southborough, even separate from start time, in, within the context of the conversations we've been having, another start time discussion somewhat connected is the start time and what's going to need to be a little bit flexible, if, given all the construction that's going to be taking place in town.
It's gonna be awful the next couple of years.
So, having them do this ahead of schedule, even if it wasn't the start time discussion that we were having, as it's sort of a general conversation, having them do this now will be fantastic for us in Southborough, because we're not opening up our schools and trying to figure out the routes. We'll be tweaking based on the construction that will be taking place in Southborough.
I wonder, will you be able to kind of coordinate, is it Karen Gilligan, or who it's gonna be, to kind of say, you know, giving her, here's our bus route, here's our time, and, you know, what's the construction gonna be to get ahead of, you know, what are we gonna have to reroute, what are we gonna have to take more time on? Because I, you know, it was the one little Verizon truck there, and, you know, the construction was, I mean, the cars were way down the road, and I just thought, oh, gosh.
It was back up to Westborough, really, where they're hardly doing anything.
And I was like, you haven't even begun, so, it's gonna really impact, I mean, especially what, yeah, you're just laughing, because it's really woodwork that.
I'm gonna buy a moped and just come in.
Yeah, exactly. Everybody, so, I just think it's gonna be something that if the town, we're gonna have to, like, beat into the town like you need, you're gonna impact the schools, so you need to communicate that ahead of time.
So, even Karen was a little disappointed that some of the construction would not happen until we were already in session, but there is definitely a commitment that we will be all sitting around the table, trying to work out this, this situation as soon as it's known. S. Southborough Extended Day was visiting with me this week, and it's just, just so wonderful that all of the organizations in town that provide opportunities for students continue to work together. You know, Greg has done such phenomenal work with the Summer Enrichment Program, and, you know, even the Extended Day Program has committed to make sure that there's options, these, these options are available for the students who are in the Extended Day Program, and, you know, that mutual support and flexibility. And the conversation with Extended Day was, are you aware that might, there might be some later buses and later students arriving to Extended Day? So, they'll be at the table with us as well, because parents rely on, on their services to provide care for students. So, they'll be part of the process. I think there's gonna be a lot of conversations, not yet known about what, except transportation and times taking place.
So, I have a question. So, so next year is probably gonna be a mess, right? So, that's not the year to think about switching start times anywhere and adjusting everything in a reliable schedule. What, what is the goal for after that? Is the, is, is the goal to try to work toward one of the options that came up in the last, in the Combined Meeting, which is to move everything by twenty minutes? Or is the goal, for the high school by twenty minutes and the rest of the schools by not as much? Or is the goal to figure out a way to get the high school to start even later than that, in which case it probably would have a greater impact on the K-through-eight schools?
So, I, I think the goal is to continue, and, you know, I think it's a bigger discussion than just what I, what my takeaway was from that meeting. But my takeaway from that meeting was that the amount of enthusiasm for a twenty-minute change in start time at the high school was not necessarily there, that in fact, the discussion was, can we do something more innovative that would include perhaps a consideration of change of time at the high school with minimal impact on the K-8s? And what does that look like? And I, I believe that part of that conversation was, in order for us to realize something far more global in, in nature and scope, and impactful for teaching and learning at the high school level, and providing our students with greater options and opportunities, that it's more than just taking a look at the time, it's looking at how we can provide a greater scheduling option for students, which may include expanding the day, and it may include changing the start time. And the, the notion that I'm moving forward on in the meantime, while the high school has all of those conversations, which are very important and take some time to get it right, because there's so many factors to consider, it's so multifaceted. And with any, any change of a high school's schedule, it is about a two-year process, without even exploring innovative educational opportunities. So, I'm moving forward with the bus company to continue to explore the options of moving start time, not impacting K-8, minimal cost. So, tonight, I shared the true cost of a bus that would be something that the K-8s would look at if we tiered off separately. But some of the conversations have been, okay, if we consolidate stops, right now, the bus stops, which will change and have practice a little bit, and lots of conversations. How much time do we save? You know, what is our tiering off at each level, and what does that look like? And we're making some headway, we're making some, some good progress. I think having the bus company take charge of adjusting our routes, ninety percent of that coming from the bus company this soon, gives us a lot of opportunities to take a look. So, it, it was highly unlikely that we would have been able to do anything by twenty ninth of the fall, this fall, and I've had conversations with Extended Day. They sort of wiped their tears when they thought that all of the postings that they've seen here and there were actual facts, that we were going to change the schedule, because they basically said, I, I don't know how we can respond that quickly. We can't. It's significantly changing our staffing, it's significantly changing who's going to be available for the students, it would have a significant impact on the number of hours that we would be able to provide services, such that depending on what happened in the morning, they may have to cancel their entire morning options. So, they need that time, as do all of the organizations that support our students in and out of the school day, just to adjust.
That makes sense.
So, I'm, I'm very excited about today's conversation.
So, is the idea, I'm sorry, because I, maybe I think too linear, too much in a linear way, but is, so is the idea to, to figure out a way to move the high school by twenty minutes?
No.
While also then looking at larger changes down the road? Like, so the conversations with the bus companies right now are to figure out?
How much, if any, time?
Yeah.
The twenty minutes, I, I don't want to put words in the school committee's mouth, but my assumption is the twenty minutes is basically off the table. The determination was, if we're going to go through all of this and have a lot of folks impacted for twenty minutes, that's not a, a real meaningful amount of minutes.
Okay.
So, it's effort versus outcome, and, and the effort and, and the resulting sort of upheaval to, for a lot of folks for twenty minutes may not necessarily be the direction that we want to go.
Okay.
Twenty minutes was suggested as something that we could realistically target as a manageable amount of time, if we did consolidation of stops and all of those kinds of things, and looked at how we tier. In some cases, our students are held on the bus before they are, before the school day begins, so when they rely, when they arrive at a, a bus at a school, they're not able to disembark right away, and that's sometimes due to coverage in the morning. And if we looked at and had some great conversations with our administrative team, is there a way for us to get coverage in the morning so that we switch teacher duties? And so, all of those conversations would take place, and twenty minutes could have potentially been a doable option. It's off the table, and so the two directions that we're moving is what can we realistically do, and then what do we really want to do as a major shift in the way we deliver teaching and learning at the high school? So, we heard Julie mention a little earlier about the blended learning model. You know, those are things that we want to explore, and how can they be embedded in the school day? We know that providing our students with choice, because even though the research suggests one thing, some students do prefer getting up early in the morning, and, you know, one of the things that Southborough Extended Day said to me when they visited was that, you know what, if this changes, we, we have a lot of students who, who work for Extended Day, high school students, because they are the ones who are providing the tutoring to the youngest students, they're closest to the new curriculum, and so that would change. So, it, there's a lot of pieces to this, but we have continually, throughout this period, engaged in a very healthy dialogue about what are our options, but have been realistic about not just the financial implications, but the life-changing, you know, for parents and for students. So, it's, it's an exciting opportunity, it is a challenge, and we haven't given up, and we won't. It's still worth exploring. And today, we took a very. And today, we took a, a very, I'm gonna say radical, but we, we, we changed the box that we've been looking from, and Julie's lens, we changed the focus a little, and, and started with a whole different mindset about what the day would start like with our buses. So, they have, they have the challenge in front of them, the bus company now, and they're gonna make their own rubrics cube and see if we can do something about that.
And one, just one last thing. So, have they done this with other districts, do you know?
They, there are very few regional school districts that are configured like we are to begin with. And there are very few regional schools that have successfully, successfully changed the start time. I think fifteen have actually, not regional, fifteen school districts in Massachusetts have changed their start time. Many of those are districts that have changed, that changed years ago. And they were able to do that. NOSA is a regional district on the Cape. They've changed the start time, but their geographic distribution of students that attend that regional school really played a big, a part of why they were able to do that. So, there are about fifteen school districts that have been able to change the start time out of the two, three hundred and fifty-one cities in town and two hundred and sixty-two districts or something. So, it's a challenge. But we like challenges, and we are persistent when it's for good. So, we are persistently embracing the challenge.
Thank you.
And I just wanna say something too, Christina. You've been working on this for years and years. And I just wanna say how much we appreciate all the work you've done, that it's been in front of the school committees for the whole time that I've been here. And we have tried and tried to come up with some reasonable solution, and it's just been very difficult. And it's not, it's not the fault of anyone, it's just, it's a difficult problem to solve. And last year, recently, when we determined that, that the twenty minutes wasn't good enough, that kinda means you go right back to the beginning. I mean, you, you don't kinda like start there and continue forward. I think we're right back to the drawing board, and, and I know how difficult that is. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate, how much, how hard you've worked on this for years and years now, so.
And that a lot of people have put a lot of, a lot of effort and.
It's been a team discussion about. Team discussion. I actually brought the, this, this is, I just wanted to, this is actually, all these little tabs here are the amount of times we've had discussions at one or more school committees. So, we keep adding to the tabs, and that's good. We have lots of post-it notes. We'll add another tab for tonight. But really, it has been something that a lot of folks have been talking about. We clearly know what the research suggests. And, you know, we're, we're still gonna continue the, the good discussion. And as I mentioned, you know, changing your pair of glasses and looking at it in a different way is kind of exciting, and, and that's what we're doing now with the bus company. And they're excited. To answer your question, we, we talked to them today, and, you know, the general consensus was, whoa, if this works, you have something to market to every regional school district. So, we're hoping that we move from possible to probable today.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Great. Awesome.
Thank you all too. I know this is something that's a challenge for you, because you get the calls and you get the questions. And we all would like to be able to do whatever we can, you know, in a snap of the finger, but.
We just have super tension.
Good work. And I say, go ask the school committee, so.
All good.
Yeah, it's all good. So, thank you.
And next item on the agenda is enrollments.
Enrollment in your packet? Again, as I mentioned earlier, we keep watching our kindergarten numbers so that we can make some decisions, yeah, about that. They're a little bit lower, but it's early, and people move in July and August.
You still think they're out there?
Hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah, they will come. We, we built it, so they will come.
And also.
A lot of people just forget to register, don't they?
We, we have a few that we're still in contact with, that we're trying to solidify. But most, most have.
Oh, okay. But were the movements or whatever?
We see a preschool increase, right, though? Did we see it? We saw a slight increase in preschool?
In preschool, yes.
And obviously, they move from preschool to kindergarten, so that's good, no, for continued enrollment. And also, in the packet, is the FY eighteen Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report. Again, a vote to approve until audited. You know, it's, and it's amazing, after town meeting, it's like, okay, we're done waiting. Let's just start thinking about expending nineteen, but we're really not. And we have so much work to be done in, in, in two months. And we're keeping a watchful eye over our balance as well.
So, we need a motion?
I'll move that we, I'll let Roger move.
Go ahead.
I'm going to approve the, uh, FY two thousand and eighteen budget, um, as of March thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, contingent on the.
Second? All in favor? Motion passes.
Except for May ninth.
I know.
This, this is, it's always amazing to watch this grow. And in September, you wonder, will we ever fill up this page? And then, when you get to this point, we say, did we fill up this page with all those meetings? Yes, we did. And again, another great budget process. Ready to start? Not right now, but again, another page in September. I do wanna make note of the elections are, are May eighth. So, at our next meeting, unfortunately, or, not unfortunately, that we won't be welcoming new folks, but again, it's the last night with Jerry and Mary Beth. You're smiling, we're not.
I'm gonna miss you guys.
Every week, every week.
As soon as they deliver Greg's packets, then they'll be joining the distributing, right? Think you put them to work on the Summer Enrichment Program first.
There we go. And I guess educational policy, there is none at this time. And policy development and distribution?
So, the winter season has not been kind to the policy subcommittee. We've had a couple of cancellations due to the weather. But we did have our last meeting on March twenty-second, so we, we hit the ground running, running in spring. And we have a number of first reads for the committee. Just a couple of notes. E two-ten, School-Based Public Access Diffusion Program. J one-twenty, School Immunization Requirements. J two-twenty, Dispensing of Medication. J three-forty, Head Injury and Concussions Policy. Came out of policy, Health and Wellness Policy Subcommittee and also Legal Counsel. So, they also were reviewed at the policy subcommittee meeting on, um, March twenty-second. At the twenty-second, we also looked at J one-ten, Recruiting and Hiring Personnel. Becky Pellegrino, Human Resources Administrator, Legal Counsel, I took a close look at that. I two-forty, Class Size is a first read. And I three-forty, New Religious Observance Policy, came out of the combined policy meeting. And be happy to answer any questions, or if the committee would like to take some time to review those.
I just, it's more of clarification. So, I see a lot of, it's to strengthen the Southborough Public Schools, and we changed a lot of that to the Public Schools of Northborough and Southborough. But does that make sense if Northborough Public Schools have their own policy, Southborough Public Schools have their own policy they vote on in the region? They're the, what are they? Algonquin Regional. So, should ours just say the Southborough Public Schools, because it's only a policy? I don't know. Or is this, right? Because there's three different ones.
Superintendent Johnson?
Assistant Superintendent, I think, you know, so we've gone back and forth with this.
It just doesn't make sense to me that a Southborough Public School policy uses the Northborough one.
Well, unless, unless these are intended to encompass.
But there's no policy that oversees the three. There's three separate committees that each have a different policy manual.
So, I think this is an excellent point, that we should probably come to some consensus.
Yeah, just wondering more.
And I think the chat, the reason it sort of moved and gravitated to the Public Schools of Northborough and Southborough was due to the fact that we would come together when we created new policies.
Right.
And then, we used the Public Schools of Northborough and Southborough. But in reality, each committee votes separately.
Right.
So, we could, and, and maybe this is a discussion in June, when we finally approve these policies with everyone at the table, agree.
I'm more thinking from a legality.
Right.
Is there really an entity called the Public Schools of Northborough and Southborough? I mean, there's, that's the union, there isn't, but there's the Northborough Public Schools, the Southborough Public Schools, Algonquin. I don't think there's an entity legal. I'm more thinking from a, a legal standpoint, that someone could come out. I don't know. I'm wondering.
I think that in the, in the years doing, during pol, doing policies now, that we, we try to simplify things too. And so, administratively, we, we've tried to keep it as simple as we can.
Totally.
For these guys.
And I, oh, I get it. Oh, I'm more thinking, and I love the idea that, and I think it's been wonderful in the last couple of years, that we sort of bring the three committees together, because if everybody has to have a head injury and concussion policy, the administration should not have to sit with three committees. You can all come to one. I'm really just saying that then, when somebody goes to the word, to the Microsoft Word, they do one version that says Northborough, one that says Algonquin, and one that says Southborough, and store them separately. More, only, only if it's legal, just more, I don't know. It was just my question, so. I don't know.
I happen to agree that, and, and where it comes up is when there's a difference of wording in a policy, that one of the reasons we're bringing all of these back to each of the three committees, is because each committee can, if they choose, despite the fact that we, we at Central Office would really enjoy having the language consistent, because sometimes it's a nuance of just a ah and a da in a policy. But in reality, each committee does vote for its own policy.
And maintain, it's more maintains it.
So, if, if, I think it's a great conversation to have at the school committee.
You can have it offline, just check with somebody.
We can check it legal. And for us, it would be a replace all, as long as all the rela, language was consistent. Replace the Public Schools of Northborough with Public Schools of Northborough, the Public Schools of Southborough, and the Pub, the Northborough, Southborough Regional School District. Those are the official entities.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I was more thinking, those are the legal entities.
So, there's, I think, at least two conversations here, or two, maybe even two and a half. The half is, in addition to not, for the administration to have to meet with the policy committees, you know, there's certainly more time-consuming, challenging than, than legal one. But also to administer the policy. You know, when you're talking about the, the policy, you know, if you, if, if you have confidence that these policies are the same, I want to say similar, um, there's really not much hesitation.
Yeah.
But when you start to get into different policies for those kinds of issues, you know, maybe rapid response, uh-oh, let's see. So, I think, I think there's a good reason to try to.
I think it's great. It's more, I'm just saying, how's it close to the story?
To try to make things consistent, if at all operationally possible. Now, legal is legal. And even if legal says, we, we read with Mary, Mary Beth, and that, well, because it's, it's not really a legal entity, you have to have, um, Southborough Schools, Northborough Schools, Regional School. But even if, even if that's what we're required to do, it still makes a lot of sense for the policies to be the same. And the only change, unless there's legal issues, is, okay, um, it says Southborough here, it says Northborough here, but the administration has comfort that they know what the policy is.
Right, yeah, that's totally.
So, that's, I think, a goal, which may or may not be able to achieve. I think that should be the goal of all the subcommittees.
Totally. I was just asking about that.
No, it's, it's a good question, because we've only really done the, used the wording of Northborough, Southborough, Public Schools on a handful of, am I correct? It's only been done on a handful of, of policies where they really, there really wasn't going to be a lot of discussion about us being different than Northborough's. Now, now, if you look through here, you can see the, the policy book, that there are many policies where there really are some differences. And when we go through those, we, we might look at Northborough's and say, no, we, we don't agree with that. And, and, you know, we, we, those are not, those are not the numbers that we would look at for class size.
Right, right.
And in that case, we would never do that. But there was just a handful. Some of them were health-related ones too.
So, many of them are required by the law, and, and I'm not, I think it's great. I, I do think we streamlined, and it's been wonderful. I'm more just asking if that's legal.
And, and the combined notion came about more so because we were asked to create new policies. So, in the creation of the new policies, we came together to create that new language, so that.
It's great.
At the, at the start, we were sort of united, and it, it, from the comments from school committee members, it was nice to hear other perspectives. And so, at a challenging point where we were trying to create a new policy, as, as we will be with rewriting of the acceptable use policy, it makes no sense to have three different acceptable use policies, because it is hard to administrator, to administer. But you want the language to be consistent if you're putting the energy into having it researched by counsel and reviewed by our tech teams and so forth. Unless there's significant nuances, you wouldn't have it change. And we created the, the response to Bill two-two-two language, and the, the policy for the opioid, the Religious Observance, and we've had some really in-depth conversations. So, to be able to have everyone there when we create a new policy is phenomenal. And then, we, it, it sort of spun out into a meeting as policy subcommittees individually. And if we had just reviewed a policy in, by, in another district, and had it reviewed by the Health and Wellness Committee, and had it reviewed by Legal Counsel, we always kept those attached to any consideration we might wanna give to those when we're sitting with any of the three subcommittees. And in many cases, it was, yeah, we like this language, it makes good sense, we'll, we'll choose to keep that. But it would be the Southborough School, Northborough School District. So, I think, I think it's working really well, except we kind of wanna get our arms around whether we want to use the Public Schools of Northborough and Southborough at all on any of the policies, or do we wanna do as you suggested? So, it's kind of like the best of both worlds. We're getting a consistent language, and now, do we just wanna identify each policy by each specific district?
So, you're administering this. And I'm curious, let's, let's, I'm curious if having some way to know, even if, even if, even if for some reason, Legal Counsel says you really have to have Southborough, you have to, you have to describe these, read these districts as.
Unique entities.
Unique entities. You still could potentially have some policies that said, well, this is for this entity, this entity, and this entity. So, when you're trying to administer this, and you look at a policy, you immediately know, okay, this is, you know, we don't have to worry about this versus that versus the other. This is all-encompassing versus those, however number of policies there may be that are going to be different. I mean, just thinking of trying to administer this thing to the camera.
Yeah, I mean, it's great.
Yeah. And I think that.
You know, effectiveness.
And Christine, I think, when she was Assistant Superintendent, came up with a master chart of Northborough, Southborough, Northborough, Southborough. So, it's something we easily acknowledge where policies are. There's parity with policy, and we, like, to your point, we don't need to read through each policy. It's common.
And I think it's fair to say too, that your points are really good on it. But in terms of the North, when it says Northborough and Southborough, Public Schools of Northborough and Southborough, the only policies that have this are the ones that came out of the Regional Committee, right? So, so, so that's kind of, so it's in front of the Regional Committee, you have, you know, the, the high school and the two towns are there. And you're looking at one thing that makes sense to all of you, instead of having to hand out two things to everyone else. So, that, that's kind of the way that it's, that was the way that it, it started. But whatever people wanna do, I guess.
I think that makes perfect sense. I mean, the Public Schools of Northborough and Southborough is on the website, it's all over the place. So, I mean, I think even if someone wants to make a legal issue out of it, I think they'd have a really hard time.
Hopefully, legal will say, okay.
An alternative, is maybe just do it with the name of the Public Schools of Southborough, the Public Schools of Northborough, and then can you just put a note at the end of the policy that just says this policy, you know, this policy has also been adopted by blah, blah, blah.
I think you have a good idea.
And you name the other two committees, and then you have it here. So, there's a note, so if, you know, one committee says, I wanna amend this policy, then you know it's also just about.
As a reference.
A reference, like an MGL reference. We can have our own reference.
Right, just for grabs.
So, these will come back for a second reading? So, these will come back for a second reading. And we also have a policy recommended rescind I-210 instructional materials.
Very in-depth policy, I noticed.
Yeah, right. There, there was actually a lot of discussion about that one.
So, I'm going to make a motion to rescind the instructional material policy I-210.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, we, we'd agree to do it in our committee, so I'm totally free. Any discussion on it, or do I have a second?
I'm good with it.
Second. A second. All in favor? Rescinded.
If we can go back to the concussion policy for a sec.
Sure.
It says, this is supposed to be reviewed and/or revised as needed, but at least every two years. So, it was adopted in May 2012, and that's it. I don't know, I don't know if we, do we make a note when it's reviewed but not revised?
That master policy, she, we have review dates and policies that need to be reviewed on a cycle. Those are recorded as well.
So, I mean, I guess the question, has, has it been reviewed since 2012? Or is this, or is this it?
Yes. What, what hasn't been added is the citation. Because I can remember Lori Pardee specifically saying, yeah, it's fine, we're not going to make any changes. And so, probably because it was that simple, that we didn't put it to paper. But she has been very consistent with the one, and it's her language that says we have to review it every two years. So, we'll add that to the notation because we do make a note when it's revised. Or, and/or reviewed. So, thank you for bringing that up, yeah. We have to get Lori to sit in the committee meetings with us so we can remember to do that.
It's kind of funny. Today, I thought all the questions were going to be on the class size policy, but.
We do have a, actually, the class size policy, just one note on that particular policy. In the recommendations, the chart of the actual desirable class size, the, the policy for desirable class size for grades three, four, and five was eighteen to twenty-two. And the desirable class size for grade six, seven, and eight was sixteen to twenty-two. That was a, an error. So, we reversed them to their correct order.
Makes more sense.
Does make more sense.
A lot of good work.
Yep. We also, distribution of personnel report?
No personnel changes to report.
It's two months in a row.
That is two months.
It's great.
That's like, that's, that's almost like the town meeting.
That's right. We'll go three for three, hopefully.
And communications.
Just an announcement that the commissioner has changed. And we're anxiously awaiting his appearance at the next superintendent's meeting in May. So, we'll have some feedback on what his philosophy and vision might be for us as a.
As a blow.
Mm-hmm. So, we haven't heard too much from him at this point. So, hopefully, when he presents at the MASs meeting in May, we'll be able to bring back some comments. This is a not-to-miss second annual event by our ELL, ELD group, and also Rhoda Webb led the first initiative. And she promises that this extravaganza will be even, will even be better. I don't know how that's possible, but will surpass attendance. And we're excited about, about the second annual event. We warned her last year, it was such a success, this could be something that she does every year. And she just with a smile and great enthusiasm embraces it wholeheartedly and started planning it almost the, the next night after last, last year's was over. Absolutely. So, more will be coming out in the packets and so forth for our administrators to send home.
And the action on the minutes?
K through twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, we just, that's right. K through twelve, World Language Study Group.
Kathleen, no meeting, right?
No, the smell.
It's smelly.
Yeah, but we are scheduled to meet in May.
May.
The third, um, no, second, second almost here.
Great.
And we'll need motions on the action of, on the minutes.
Is the executive session just to approve or release? There's nothing here to, right?
Right, that's approval and release.
It's approval and release. So, the whole move that we accept the minutes of the Southborough Public League Executive Session on Wednesday, March 14, 2018, approval and.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes. And so, we also, do we do the open minute, open meeting? We just did the, just did the.
Right, I would do it as you texted. Because I thought, I thought Mary, Mary Beth, since you're chairman of the K-12, should actually make the last motion of this.
Oh, that's nice. Well, I, I make a motion to be accept the open meeting minutes of Wednesday, March 14, 2018.
Your second. I'll second.
I take my second, then. Chairman's the second.
It's my last second. All in favor? Motion passes.
So, that'll be in our minutes in this meeting.
There we go.
And we, now we have approval of bills and payrolls and agenda items for next month.
Matt has a pile of yellow over there.
Small patch.
And at this point, it's school choice public hearing and the anxiously awaited Finn School approval. And I'm sure there'll be other items, probably another legislative update.
Yep.
And school committee elections?
Yes, yep.
Committee elections with new members.
The elections are in June, seven, seven, eight?
Or Tuesday.
So, it must be the year.
Yeah. I think we moved after that.
Yep. So, it's the day before the school, and that's what we're going to do. So, so, so the people that win the election have to know to get to the town clerk the morning of the school committee, or else she can't attend the meeting.
Right.
Maybe get Jim Hagerty to come and swear people.
You have to be sworn in. So, when you win that night, you run to the town hall the next morning. And they swear you in.
Or you can do it that night.
You might be able to do it that night if you're there, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Jim's, yeah, Jim will be hanging around that night.
Yeah, yeah. And the last item is audience sharing. And we have no.
I do, just a brief comment. I want to thank Chief Morrow, Chief Paulus, and Officer Landry for being part of the Safe School Readiness Forum that we held at Algonquin Regional High School. It was just an amazing opportunity to be joined by not only the fire chief, police chief, and the school resource officer in Northborough, in Southborough, but also in Northborough. And it really does speak to the incredible collaboration we have within our town, but also with the boroughs. And how much support they've provided to all of us as we continue to enhance our safety protocols. Also, to the administrative team, I think, what an incredible message that was sent by the members because we had representation from K-12. It was a voluntary evening, and everyone came. And that's because everyone is really invested, first and foremost, in the safety of our, our students. So, thank you to the school committee members who, who came. It, I just received an email from Kathy Daglish. It's out on YouTube for all those parents who, who really are interested and just could not simply make that event. So, it was a, a good informa, good information shared, some great questions from, from the audience. And I think the feedback was, was very positive. Also, to Clayton and to Steve, before that presentation, we had sort of a mini-safety presentation, but it was certainly maximum information and maximum participation from the Finn and Woodward family hosted by, by Finn School. But Steve was there as well to really share what takes place at the earliest grades. And I think that really underscored the fact that we've customized our protocols to be age-appropriate and to be respectful of the concerns that are present at each grade level. So, thank you. And the good work that is all part of providing a safe school environment beyond just our protocols, but a welcoming, nurturing school climate each and every day for our students continues.
I, I'd like to echo that. I was at both presentations, and I thought they were very well done, really, and well-received from everything I heard after. And really very informational and reassuring, and very, very good. So, thank you for all of that.
I've got one a little thing. I wanted to congratulate Keith LaVoye and the, and the rest of the Tridier community on a very successful volleyball marathon, which, oh, yeah. If I remember the one call correctly, it was 25,000?
No, not that much. We hope so. About half that, hopefully, about the fall.
That's still a lot.
Which is still very good.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
The participation was eighty-three percent, which is as good as we've ever done. Stays consistent. And, but I think this year was different. We had over 250 students still here at eight o'clock, which has never happened. I can say that for sure. So, there was a very spirited eighth-grade group that kept it going all the way to the end. And, you know, it was, it was just an awesome event, and the parent support. And it's one of the only opportunities that parents get to volunteer at Tridier because our students don't want their parents around. But in this case, they do. And it was a great event from beginning to the end. So, Amy DeShane and Alyssa Adams were our parent organizers, and they did a stellar job from beginning to end. And we're wrapping up tomorrow with a breakfast for the homeroom winners. So, they'll be enjoying that tomorrow morning.
Very good. Okay. So, I'll make them, is, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Should I, should I second?
To, to, we're adjourning to cake.
Cake. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Gavel.
A last gavel.